We try to bring in as many motor officers as we can for that event because it is easier for us to sit on a sidewalk. The state of Arizona law allows us to position our motorcycles on sidewalks to where we can monitor those school zones a little bit easier than a car would be able to do. If I had to give one message, it's to try to really pay attention to driving and to remember that it is a multitask event, that you're doing many things at one time, and to really pay attention so that the public can actually help us to reduce those collisions too.
The thing I love about events the most is the opportunity to provide experiences. It's something that my family enjoys to do. It's something that my wife and I and our daughter enjoy doing. It's really the premier opportunity for people to come together. My job is to coordinate, plan, and produce some of the city's exciting events. And I get the opportunity to work with local businesses, to bring them out and put them in the public's eye.
I think what we're trying to achieve is community engagement. There may be events that we offer that are for a smaller demographic or a larger demographic, but to try to engage the community, no matter whom they are.
So what I do is I help plan and organize our events. I take care of our vendors and their registrations, and I also do the backend of all their payments and any errors or issues that they have. I also transport our equipment and set up the plans, the parking, and the maps for our events. I hope they walk away with a really great memory. I love that families can come here and just be passionate about our community together, and be able to listen to music, and hopefully have a good story to talk about on the way home.
Sponsorships give us the chance to enhance activities and bring new things to our events in the city. They give us really momentum to elevate our events and make us a premier city.
I work with both events and sponsorship. So in the sponsorship realm, I help out the coordinator with reaching out to sponsors, getting agreements ready to go. Event day, I could be a jack-of-all-trades. All of us just do a wide range of things that all just come together to make the event a success.
I get to plan parties every day. Who gets paid to plan parties?
I got an email from the city a year ago or so, and that kind of motivated me along with our own goals as a family to look into a perfect space for our business, for our vision. We decided to purchase our own property. My son is 18, so we didn't want to commit to another five years of lease. We did all the process with the city, and we found this perfect location. There's this topic about the city, then it's really hard to deal with them, then they make the process really hard. Well, that was not my experience. I can tell you, I was a little bit nervous to do all the process with permits, zoning, building. From the beginning to the end, I had a very smooth process. There was a group of people working with the city for my project. Danielle is like a mediator, you know, and she was always making sure that everything was going to be smooth. And Mr. Dell, he took time off his work to meet us here with my contractor to make sure that we were doing things correctly. I don't see that happening in other cities. I never worked with other business owners, Gilbert, Scottsdale. And the way how this city is, it's very particular. They're really good because we're a small community, so we're family at the end of the day, I think, and that's how they treat you. They don't treat you just as a business owner. They care about you. They really care about your business. Like when at the moment you think, "Oh my God, how stressful." It's at the end of the day, you realize that as a business owner, they're trying to protect you. And that's what I'm most grateful for.
Hey, Maricopa! I'm Quinn Knoll, your Community Enrichment Director. We've had some great interest lately in an event that we announced called Concerts in the Park. And we thought this would be a great time to talk to you about what we're doing in general, the overall game plan for events in the city of Maricopa. So we're actually focused on three tiers of events. The first we call community events. These are smaller, more intimate events. They're largely covered by sponsorships, which is why we're able to bring them to you often for free. This is our Pecan and Pumpkin Walk, our Dive-In Movies, our Ribbon Cuttings, State of the City, and now this Concert in the Park series that we're so excited to have you at. Our next tier is signature events. These are ones that you know. They've been around for our community for a long time, and you love them. These are our Maricopa, our Great American Fourth, and our Copa Cultural Events. This is an opportunity for thousands of Maricopa residents to come out and get to know each other and enjoy a great time. The last tier is event tourism. We know a lot of people have been interested to see what's going to return after we kicked off this initiative last year with the 20th Anniversary Celebration and the Wild West Music Fest. Well, I'm pleased to tell you that, yes, we will continue to explore this tier of event. And moving forward, we're going to be looking to fund it from the bed tax. This is money that the city collects through hotel stays that the state specifically designates must be spent on tourism. We know that Maricopans, they love an exciting show and amazing entertainment, and they don't always want to travel somewhere else to see it. We're going to look to bring that entertainment right here to your own backyard for you. It's also an opportunity to draw interest from outside of our community. People that come and visit, they spend their money here, and they get a chance to see what Maricopa has to offer, all while boosting our local economy. And residents, they get to enjoy the show right along with them. Our goal is to help fill up our calendar throughout the year and create events that appeal to a wide range of residents of different ages and all backgrounds. So we're going to get things going on October 19th with that free Concert in the Park right here at Copper Sky. Join us from 5:00 to 7:30 for a beer yard, great food, and some amazing live music. It's going to be an absolute blast.
Hello, my name is Rodolfo Lopez. I'm the Development Services Director for the city of Maricopa. And today, we're going to be introducing the city's new Ready, Set, Build program. With Ready, Set, Build, you gain access to pre-approved house plans for two-floor plans and three different elevation designs at no cost. The elevations were designed with an aesthetic front porch charm to adhere to the adopted Heritage District Design Guidelines. But here's the best part: By utilizing our pre-approved plans, you'll save thousands of dollars on architectural fees and reviews. You'll find a piece of land, find a contractor, and get a permit. There is no waiting for any extra reviews as the plans are pre-approved. Ready, Set, Build is the first phase of our project, with plans to expand to offer options usable anywhere in the city and potentially for businesses as well. Contact us today to learn more and take the first step towards owning your piece of Maricopa.
At first, I was thinking, you know, hey, maybe five kids will sign up. Boom, one night, and it was completely booked. I had people texting me, "Hey, my kid's on the waitlist. Can we make an exception?" I'm like, "Oh my gosh." I never would have expected that. I've lived in Maricopa since I was born. I've lived through the city, and I've seen what it has given me, and I'm also seeing what I can add to it, what I can make better for kids. So I'm thinking, okay. I grew up here. Looking back, what do I wish I had? This program is all about thinking creatively, innovate. That's my big thing. It's called Astro Innovators, and we're innovating through space.
I love science. Sketching our planet, moon, or asteroid out, I think that was my favorite part. I think Jaden did really good at preparing the class and doing different slides.
I like that he makes some funny jokes. It's so funny, and I just like that he's always having fun with us.
My mom found it on Facebook, I believe, and she asked me if I wanted to go to it, and I really did. So I decided to come every week and not miss any events.
I wish, I wish, I wish. I wish this happened. I wish the city did this. I wish we had this program. And then I kind of thought of it. I had a real value discovery one day, and I thought, hey, I can do that. I had first had a meeting with the Assistant City Manager, and I said, "Hey, I really want to be able to do something, and I have an idea, and, you know, let's do something with Legos." And we worked out a plan, sat down on my computer, and I spent hours just making the curriculum, really designing it from the top down of what I wanted to do with these kids. And I'm really grateful that I was able to get this real opportunity to build something that's completely mine. And I've learned a lot through this process. I've learned a lot about, you know, what kids are really capable of. Where I feel the most satisfied and the most fulfilled is by engaging in public service, is by taking, you know, a group of kids and really engaging with them and teaching them and being a part of their lives. To be able to have a really strong community, everybody needs to be involved. We need contributors to be able to maintain Maricopa's vision to be a strong, thriving community. Don't wait to be in a position where it's easily accessible. It's never going to be easy. Get started now. Make that impact.
I am Officer Pete Torres with the Maricopa PD Traffic Unit, and I am also a motor officer. Motor officers are on motorcycles throughout their shift. We enforce traffic throughout the city. Our goal is to reduce traffic collisions and keep drivers safe on the road.
Just on a motorcycle, it's a different world. We can see a lot more. We don't have the whole vehicle that frame obstructing our view from if we're looking left or right. We can maneuver around the city fairly easily. If there is traffic congestion, we can split lanes if needed or use a sidewalk safely, of course. It's a whole different game.
A couple of the major focuses that we have are school zones, also to reduce collisions while people are going to work in the morning specifically, try to reduce the number of impaired drivers that are on the road in the evening as well as the day. We're starting to see more in the day. So those are just some of the goals that we have. One of the things we do for school zone enforcement, particularly at the beginning of the year, is we try to do a joint task force with other agencies. We will ask outside agencies from Casa Grande, Pinellas County, Gila River, sometimes Apache Junction. We will put out notices to them to see if we can enlist their help, and we will do a pretty heavy saturation if we can on the first day of school. We try to bring in as many motor officers as we can for that event because it is easier for us to sit on a sidewalk. The state of Arizona law allows us to position our motorcycles on sidewalks to where we can monitor those school zones a little bit easier than a car would be able to do. If I had to give one message, it's to try to really pay attention to driving and to remember that it is a multitask event, that you're doing many things at one time, and to really pay attention so that the public can actually help us to reduce those collisions too.
The thing I love about events the most is the opportunity to provide experiences. It's something that my family enjoys to do. It's something that my wife and I and our daughter enjoy doing. It's really the premier opportunity for people to come together. My job is to coordinate, plan, and produce some of the city's exciting events. And I get the opportunity to work with local businesses, to bring them out and put them in the public's eye.
I think what we're trying to achieve is community engagement. There may be events that we offer that are for a smaller demographic or a larger demographic, but to try to engage the community, no matter whom they are.
So what I do is I help plan and organize our events. I take care of our vendors and their registrations, and I also do the backend of all their payments and any errors or issues that they have. I also transport our equipment and set up the plans, the parking, and the maps for our events. I hope they walk away with a really great memory. I love that families can come here and just be passionate about our community together and be able to listen to music and hopefully have a good story to talk about on the way home.
Sponsorships give us the chance to enhance activities and bring new things to our events in the city. They give us really momentum to elevate our events and make us a premier city.
I work with both events and sponsorship. So in the sponsorship realm, I help out the coordinator with reaching out to sponsors, getting agreements ready to go. Event day, I could be a jack-of-all-trades. All of us just do a wide range of things that all just come together to make the event a success.
I get to plan parties every day. Who gets paid to plan parties?
I got an email from the city a year ago or so, and that kind of motivated me along with our own goals as a family to look into a perfect space for our business, for our vision. We decided to purchase our own property. My son is 18, so we didn't want to commit to another five years of lease. We did all the process with the city, and we found this perfect location. There's this topic about the city, then it's really hard to deal with them, then they make the process really hard. Well, that was not my experience. I can tell you, I was a little bit nervous to do all the process with permits, zoning, building. From the beginning to the end, I had a very smooth process. There was a group of people working with the city for my project. Danielle is like a mediator, you know, and she was always making sure that everything was going to be smooth. And Mr. Dell, he took time off his work to meet us here with my contractor to make sure that we were doing things correctly. I don't see that happening in other cities. I never worked with other business owners, Gilbert, Scottsdale. And the way how this city is, it's very particular. They're really good because we're a small community, so we're family at the end of the day, I think, and that's how they treat you. They don't treat you just as a business owner. They care about you. They really care about your business. Like when at the moment you think, "Oh my God, how stressful." It's at the end of the day, you realize that as a business owner, they're trying to protect you. And that's what I'm most grateful for.
Hey, Maricopa! I'm Quinn Knoll, your Community Enrichment Director. We've had some great interest lately in an event that we announced called Concerts in the Park. And we thought this would be a great time to talk to you about what we're doing in general, the overall game plan for events in the city of Maricopa. So we're actually focused on three tiers of events. The first we call community events. These are smaller, more intimate events. They're largely covered by sponsorships, which is why we're able to bring them to you often for free. This is our Pecan and Pumpkin Walk, our Dive-In Movies, our Ribbon Cuttings, State of the City, and now this Concert in the Park series that we're so excited to have you at. Our next tier is signature events. These are ones that you know. They've been around for our community for a long time, and you love them. These are our Maricopa, our Great American Fourth, and our Copa Cultural Events. This is an opportunity for thousands of Maricopa residents to come out and get to know each other and enjoy a great time. The last tier is event tourism. We know a lot of people have been interested to see what's going to return after we kicked off this initiative last year with the 20th Anniversary Celebration and the Wild West Music Fest. Well, I'm pleased to tell you that, yes, we will continue to explore this tier of event. And moving forward, we're going to be looking to fund it from the bed tax. This is money that the city collects through hotel stays that the state specifically designates must be spent on tourism. We know that Maricopans, they love an exciting show and amazing entertainment, and they don't always want to travel somewhere else to see it. We're going to look to bring that entertainment right here to your own backyard for you. It's also an opportunity to draw interest from outside of our community. People that come and visit, they spend their money here, and they get a chance to see what Maricopa has to offer, all while boosting our local economy. And residents, they get to enjoy the show right along with them. Our goal is to help fill up our calendar throughout the year and create events that appeal to a wide range of people.
Thank you all for being here. I'd like to welcome you to the City Council Regular Session on December 3rd, 2024. At this time, I call the meeting to order. I'd like to start off with the invocation and invite Pastor Kevin Teeling from the Door Church of Maricopa to come forward for our invocation, after which the Pledge of Allegiance will be given to us by Councilmember Marsh. Thank you. Please rise if you're able.
Let's pray. Father in heaven, we thank you for all that you have done. And in this Advent season, we thank you especially for this glorious truth. The Word became flesh and dwelt among us, and we have seen His glory as of the only Son of the Father, full of grace and truth. We thank you that this King came to us as Emmanuel, God with us, and as Jesus, the one who by His death and resurrection saves His people from their sins. And we thank you that you came to us with peace and goodwill. And now I pray that in this city, that same peace and goodwill will reign over all of our citizens and all of our government. I thank you for my fellow citizens in Maricopa. I pray that you would fill their lives with grace and blessing. In this Advent season, let the hungry be filled, let the needy be provided for, let the brokenhearted be healed by our actions and by our community fellowship. And finally, I thank you, Lord, for this city government, our mayor, our council, and all of our city staff, especially those who are taking office once again this evening. I pray that you would fill them with wisdom, with clarity, and with grace so that they may execute their duties and govern us humbly and well. And I give you thanks for all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Pastor Teeling and Councilmember Marsh. And that'll take us to roll call. Councilmember Gettle?
Present.
Councilmember Nor?
Present.
Councilmember Marsh?
Here.
Councilmember Manfredi?
Here.
Councilmember Wade?
Present.
Vice Mayor Learman?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Vanessa. And that'll take us to the fun for the evening, the swearing-in ceremony. No swearing. Vanessa, how would you like us to proceed? Okay.
I don't know if we met.
Yeah.
Yeah, you guys can come up. If you want to.
Gentlemen, how are you all? Nice to see you. Thanks for helping. Okay, so obviously it's I, and then you'll state your name.
Yes.
Okay. All right, if you're ready, if you please raise your right hand and repeat after me. And I?
I, Eric Gettle.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution.
And the laws?
And the laws.
Of the state of Arizona?
Of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same?
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies?
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully?
And impartially?
And impartially.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of council member?
Of the office of council member.
For the city of Maricopa?
For the city of Maricopa.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Learman?
All right, if you're ready to begin, again, if you please raise your right hand and repeat after me. And I?
I.
Do, your name, sorry.
Amber Learman.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution.
And the laws?
And the laws.
Of the state of Arizona?
Of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same?
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies?
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully?
And impartially?
And impartially.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Of council member?
Of council member.
For the city of Maricopa?
For the city of Maricopa.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Councilmember Marsh?
Are you as well? And if you're ready, sir?
Yes.
All right, again, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. And I state your name?
I, Bob Marsh.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution.
And the laws?
And the laws.
Of the state of Arizona?
Of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same?
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies?
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully?
And impartially?
And impartially.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duty.
Of the office?
Of the office.
Of council member?
Of council member.
For the city of Maricopa?
For the city of Maricopa.
According to the best of my abilities?
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Four more years.
I met him earlier.
I know. You can't do it without the family behind you, so.
No, I'm glad he did. Is everybody up here? Do you want me to call someone else? Okay. All right, and then, and I state your name?
I, Nancy Smith.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And the Constitution?
And the Constitution.
And the laws?
And the laws.
Of the state of Arizona?
Of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same?
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies?
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully?
And I will faithfully?
And impartially?
And impartially.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Of mayor?
Of mayor.
For the city of Maricopa?
For the city of Maricopa.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
All right, well, that was fun. All right, we will take us to the report from the mayor. Councilmembers, do you have anything? Yes, Councilmember Marsh?
I wasn't so busy this last couple of weeks. Just had two meetings. The Penal Partnership hosted a breakfast where city managers from the key cities and towns in Penal County presented. And our city manager was there, and he did a really good job of representing Maricopa. He's among friends when he's sitting with the other city managers. They all know each other real well, but he did a really good job for us. I'd like to congratulate him on that. Then on the 25th, I chaired the Board of Adjustment for the county. And the big news out of that meeting was that the head of the Planning Department that runs the Board of Adjustment is resigning. He's going off to greener pasture. And the county zoning code revision that was scheduled to be in our hands today has been pushed out another month before we'll get to review it. So I'm hoping when Mr. Vitiallo goes into the supervisor position, they won't slip so many schedules. I'm going to be out of the city basically till the 22nd, so I'll wave to you from the Panama Canal. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Gettle.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Appreciate the time. Just a quick report. Back in November 23rd, just this previous couple of weeks, I had an opportunity to participate in some training with the Community Emergency Response Team here located in Maricopa. We partnered with the Red Cross, who brought in training on how to set up an emergency shelter here in our city. Just again, bringing additional resources here to Maricopa, beefing up our emergency response abilities here. And it was a great training. It took about half the day to run through. So we are one step closer, being better prepared. So it's wonderful. I also, being that this will be one of the last times we have an opportunity to meet this year, just to thank everybody for a wonderful 2024. It's been a great year serving you, and I'm excited for these next 24, these next four years of having an opportunity to move forward. We have a very important event happening this Saturday. The Maricopa is taking place here at Copper Sky, 5:00 p.m. Of course, admittance into the park is totally free. There's $10 tickets for parking. This year, of course, we'll have the Christmas tree lighting, as well as a bunch of wonderful vendors will be there to support our Christmas needs and some of the holiday gifts we may wish to purchase. There will be a drone show, I understand, if that's correct, Mayor Smith? I'm so excited to see that this year. And that'll be taking place there towards the end, which will be close to 8 o'clock. So about 7:30, plan on being there, no later than 7:30 for all of those great things. Park opens at 5:00. And then lastly, I wanted to share on December 30th, the city has a wonderful opportunity of hosting or being host to menorah lighting that'll take place here in our community. This will be, I believe, the sixth year that we have done this. I may be a little bit off on that year mark, but that'll be taking place on December 30th at the Maricopa Library Cultural Center at 6:00 p.m. It's a wonderful opportunity to come together as friends and families and neighbors and community and to celebrate light, which is what menorah and the Hanukkah season is all about. So we'd like to invite the community to be a participant in that as well. That's all I have for today, Mayor. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Councilmember Gettle. Councilmember Wade?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to reconcile Thanksgiving. Thanksgiving was a great opportunity to spend time with family as well as to partake in food. And it was very nice to be able to do that at Merica Wells Elementary School, Junior School, at the behest of Jim Schulp and his organization. Really nice turnout. Really had an opportunity to have conversation and share with each other. And, you know, on the note that some of the people that were there were without if it hadn't been for this activity. So it was really good to be able to do that and then get back to sharing with family. So I just wanted to thank Jim, his organization, Maricopa Unified School District for allowing us to use the facility, and for the families that came out to serve and to participate. And there was a little bit of entertainment. I think there was at one point in time where there was a dance-off that happened with some of the members that were participating. But just as I say, just wanted to reconcile that. Thanksgiving is a wonderful time to spend time with family as we are now in officially, I guess officially, Christmas since we moved past the 1st of December. And that too is a time to spend time with family and enjoy each other's company. And it was nice seeing the mayor and former mayor?
First dude.
First dude, okay. It was good to see the mayor first dude there, serving and participating as well, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wade. Councilmember Nor?
Thank you, Mayor. I, just a couple of things. I was able to wrap up my tour of the city this week, actually earlier today. Our city manager has been so gracious to take me to all of the different departments and all the different facilities so that I can just get a better understanding of how the city operates and all of the integral pieces that go together. Our city manager has been so gracious to take me to all of the different departments and all the different facilities so I can just get a better understanding of how the city operates and all of the integral pieces that go together. And, you know, I've been in Maricopa for over 18 years, but there's just things you don't think about. So it was great to see all the people behind the scenes. There's a lot of people behind the scenes making sure the city runs. And so I just want to thank them all for that, and I really appreciated that tour. And then, in the spirit of the holiday season, I know that there are several places around town where you can get a tag to help a needy family purchase gifts for their family. I know that, I think there's some at the fire admin office, but I definitely know there's a tree at Desert Sunrise High School, and there's a tree at the Maricopa Unified School District Office as well. And so we're coming down to crunch time on Christmas. It's hard to believe, but if you feel so fortunate and want to help those in need in our community, the good thing is those are specifically for people within our community that should be helping, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember North. Councilmember Manfredi.
We're not going to be meeting again before Christmas, so I wanted to say Merry Christmas to everybody. It's going to be a fun, exciting month for everybody. We're all going to be running around going crazy, but I just wanted to let everybody know that, you know, the end of the year is coming, so start preparing to pay your taxes and stuff. That's not why I wanted to talk. Last week, I had an opportunity to visit with Be Awesome Youth Coalition, and they do a space camp. So they had it at Pima Butte this past semester or quarter. And it was a great camp, and it allows for kids of all, not all ages, but of different ages to get together and learn from each other. It's a really great experience. So if you get a chance, I would like you to go to the Be Awesome website, take a look at what they're doing in the city of Maricopa. It's a great organization, and they can always use your help. December 12th, we're going to be having a business town hall, roundtable, get-together, scream session, when you look at the different stuff that's going on in the city. So our town hall will be for business owners or potential business owners that want to get together and just talk about what the city should be doing for businesses, or at least what they believe the city should be doing for businesses. We're going to go over what the city's already doing and what more can be done, as well as figure out what maybe shouldn't be done by the city, how to get the city out of people's way. So that's going to be December 12th at 6:00 p.m. right here in this room. So I would hope all small businesses in the city of Maricopa attend, or at least have somebody attend, because we want to hear from everybody. We want to know what are sticking points? What is a sticking point for you, maybe not opening a business that you want to open? So it's not just for only business owners, but potential business owners. There's also a new flyer, or what are these called? Pamphlet? Brochure? A new brochure that we just put together for launching your home-based business in the city of Maricopa. So stop at the front desk, pick one of these guys up if you have a small business. It would be a great way for you to learn a little bit about small businesses and how to launch them in the city. And with that, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Manfredi.
Oh, congratulations, by the way, to Eric and to the newly elected Mayor Smith, as well as Amber and Bob. You know, the work that goes into running for office is a job in itself, and the dedication of those four, as well as anybody that jumps out there and says, "I want to be an elected official," should be commended. And I hope that in 2026, there's even more people out there wanting to serve their community, wanting to step up and figuring ways that they can help the community, not just on Facebook. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Manfredi. Vice Mayor Leirman.
Mayor, there are two birthdays I'd like to recognize tonight. The National Guard's birthday is December 13th, and I have friends here in Maricopa that serve in the National Guard, and I'd like to thank them tonight for their service. And also December 20th is a Space Force birthday. And Mayor, there's a lot to be grateful for this time of year, but sadly, Maricopa experienced significant loss in the month of November. We lost two Maricopa motorcyclists to an tragic accident in Tucson, Anthony Odell and James Maurice Samuel. We also lost a highly esteemed high school student who is very missed by his classmates. And so I just wanted to recognize this time of year that these men will be deeply missed by our community.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So just a couple of things for me. I had this wonderful meeting with Senator Farnsworth. And the neat thing about that is that this is the first time that a legislator has invited myself and our intergov, Katie, into their office specifically to talk for 347. Now, don't get me wrong, we go there often to speak to many of them about State Route 347, but this time, we were invited in, and it was a lovely experience. What I found out to be true about this man is he has been a transportation champion for many, many years, and he wants to continue that. And he was extremely interested in State Route 347. We provided him with facts that he wasn't aware of in terms of just, I shared this with you at the last meeting. In 10 most deadly intersections in western United States, two of them are on State Route 347. He was actually a little shocked. He has used that in some promotional materials. In fact, I brought a copy just in case anyone wants to see it afterwards. He actually did a press release nearly immediately after we met and talked about how we have to provide funding for all transportation, but then again, for 347. And he allowed me to provide my own information in there on State Route 347. So great, great meeting with him. I like what he said in there, just reading one line. "It remains critical that we take a deep dive into funding reforms in the coming months to secure necessary resources to improve our roads, highways, and freeways. Arizona's lives and livelihoods depend on it." We all know that, don't we? It's like hugely important, and I left there feeling things were maybe, you know, more promising than when I entered the room. So for me, that was good news. I also met with Senator Lo, excuse me, Representative Lopez and Representative Martinez and President Peterson, and we talked about 347 and housing. Those were our two main topics. So we had great communications with those three legislators as well. I had a great opportunity to take an SRP watershed tour of the dams in the water system. Now, you might wonder, why is that so important to me or to the city of Maricopa? Well, I found out some really good information. I found out that they will be in the next 10 years, over the next 10 years, building a new dam, and that dam will have extra capacity. And that water, extra capacity, is going to be something that Penal County Global Water can look into. And they're already, they're already aware of that. They're already looking into it. And so what is important to me is that we're not just status quo on our water. We're looking to the future for other capacity that we can gain from that. And this is an excellent, they even stated on the tour with about 12 other people, the city of Maricopa could benefit from this. So I found that to be very exciting, and it was really impressive to see how the watershed is actually developed. I also attended the Firefighters Union Toy and Food Drive, which was phenomenal. That was actually my first time that I was in town to be able to go and participate, and they collected tons of food and lots of toys, and it was a great experience. But the most treasured picture is of those kids that are riding in the fire truck, that got a ride in the fire truck, just for bringing a can of food. I thought that was a really cool deal. Lastly, I served along with the first dude, he lets me call him that, at the Maricopa Pantry luncheon for Thanksgiving. We served, set up, helped set up, and served for a couple hours, and then we went on to some friend's house as well. But it was probably about 300 people who didn't have a place to go, and they had this place to come. And it was so pleasurable because they just wanted to enjoy the music, enjoy the food. And let me tell you, there was a plethora of food. So if you ever are at home alone on Thanksgiving with just you and your spouse, and you want to just go join in, everybody is welcome. It was a delightful experience, and I too thank the Maricopa Pantry for that experience. And then lastly, thank you so much, because serving four more years for me is just one of the joys that comes to my heart. And I look forward to it. I think it's going to be a great four years, and I think we can accomplish some amazing things. So thank you very much. That'll take us to the report from the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Just one quick reminder tonight. We have on our website a link for, we often get a lot of questions about what's coming to town, what's been submitted for permits or otherwise. Just a reminder that on our website, there's a question mark that says, "What's New Maricopa?", or you can type in whatsnewmaricopa.com to access a link, a GIS file, a map, that shows where all the different projects are coming in. It's not live in terms of updated to the second, but every few weeks, we'll go in there and update it to make sure that the public is aware of new projects that are coming, both commercial and residential. And so everyone has as much information as possible moving forward. And so just wanted to provide a reminder that we post that and try to be as transparent as possible, linking back to plans and all those kind of things, so that all of that information is available to the public.
Thank you very much, city manager. That'll take us to the call to the public. Today, I have two speaker cards, and I will call them up individually. And then afterwards, if anyone would like to speak, you're certainly welcome to approach the podium. Let me just give you a little bit of information, the procedures to follow if you address the council or council request that you express your ideas in three minutes or less. And refrain from any personal attacks or derogatory statements about any city employee, a fellow citizen, or anyone else, whether action appropriate to be, excuse me, whether in the audience or not. The mayor will limit discussion whenever they deem such an action appropriate to the proper conduct of the meeting. At the conclusion of an open call to the public, individual members of the council may respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the council, may ask staff to review a matter, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss and take legal action on any matters during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. So let me call up my first person, and that is Brendan Small and Katie Hellen.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Brendan Small. This is Katie Hynne. We're here from Desert Sunrise High School on behalf of FBLA, or Future Business Leaders of America. And we're just here tonight to spread some information about our backpack and clothing drive that we have running now for the students in need at Desert Sunrise. That has now been extended out until the end of January. And what we're looking for is new or lightly-used clothing or backpacks that you guys would like to bring in and help out the students in need to ensure that everyone can have a successful career at Desert Sunrise High School.
We invite the residents of Maricopa to join us in this effort. Donations can be dropped off at Desert Sunrise Front Office, and we appreciate any support you can give, whether it's donating, spreading the word, or simply helping us out. And together, we can help ensure that the students at our school have a successful future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your service. That's important to our community. Thank you. Next up is Elizabeth Howell. Yeah. Next up is Elizabeth Howell.
Hi, Mayor and City Council. My name's Elizabeth Howell, and I wanted to thank you for your support of the advisory committees. We work very hard to bring items to the city that you can work on. I'm stepping down because I don't drive anymore, and it's really hard to get rides for every place where I need to go. And I bring my chair with me because then I have not only a place to sit, but I can get up. When you get older, you figure out there are a lot of things you can't do anymore. But I just wanted to let you know how much I appreciated your support and involvement in the senior advisory committee. Also, I have to say something about the Shred-a-thon, since I've been in charge of it for the past seven years. And it'll be in April again this year, so if anyone asks, just the last Saturday in April at the school district offices. And thanks again for your support.
Thank you, Elizabeth. All right. Would anyone else like to approach the podium and address the council? Hi, come on forward. And just give us your name, please.
I'm Cheryl Walser Kramer. I live in Homestead North. What I want to talk about, quantum is in my neighborhood. So they're drilling into the concrete, primarily drilling into the sidewalks. However, when they're done, they're patching it with asphalt instead of concrete. It's very messy. It's crumbling apart. So I would hope someone on the city would take a look at this. This is not good. I've seen this done in other cities. I'm also wondering, perhaps I don't know this, but do you have a telephone number so that when contractors are working on projects, the public can call in? I come from Iowa. We do it that way, and it's paid for by the contractors. I hope you'll take a look at this, because it's all over the city, and they're going to be breaking out. There's no question about that. I don't want to call them sloppy, but I think they're cutting corners, and I want you to be aware of that. And thank you so much. Thank you all for your service.
Thank you. And please, would you speak to the gentleman right there in the bright blue shirt? Because I knew he would have answers for you. That'll help. Would anyone else like to approach the podium? His name is Rudy, by the way. Sorry about that, Rudy.
Good evening, and congratulations to all that were sworn in today.
Please state your name.
Oh. My name is Ocean Kent.
Thank you.
And again, congratulations to being sworn in. I've seen all of the signs when it was all going on. It was a great race, so again, congratulations. I'm excited to say I am the CEO of Ocean Industries, and most recently, we, our program of diversity, equity, inclusion was approved through the Maricopa Police Department. I want to thank Chief Goodman and his support in helping us get that approved through the police department. And it also initiated through Henry Wade, going through one of our first symposiums earlier on in the year. Then we most recently did a training at the police department with over 15 police officers. So I'm just excited about what's happening in the community. I'm not only a business owner, but I'm a resident. And last but not least, we're really excited, we talked the last time I was here, about getting a 101 tech class together for the seniors. It looks like we have all those pieces together, so we hope to be launching that in February. So stay tuned. If you'd like to know more about the cultural sensitivity training or impact engagement speaking, you can find more at oceanindustriesllc.com. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your service as well. It's very much appreciated. Thank you. Would anyone else like to approach the podium? All right, seeing none, I will close the call to the public. That'll take us to the consent agenda items. We, tonight, we have consent agenda items 8.1 through 8.5. I have no speaker cards this evening. Councilmembers, do you have any questions, concerns, comments? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember Marsh. Do I have a second? Second by Vice Mayor Leirman. Any additional comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. All right, thank you. That'll take us to the regular agenda items. We first have item 9.1, which is appointing one citizen to fill a vacancy on Parks and Recreation Committee, and that appointment is up to Councilmember Gettle.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I have a vacancy on this citizen advisory committee for the Parks and Recreation here in our city. I'd like to nominate Devin Pitcher to serve on that committee. He is about a five-year resident here of the city of Maricopa, and I don't see Devin here today. He may, no, he's not here yet, so. But strong resume. He has been involved in some of the sports here in the city. His interest really is in. His interest really is in the trail systems and be able to support the trail systems as we move forward and build that out in the city. So I think he will be a great addition to that committee, and I'd like to nominate him to fill that position.
Thank you. I will say that I have also met Devin Pitcher, and he's interested in lots of things. I love it. 347 is one, so he's a great asset to our community. Thank you.
And he's also a graduate of our Maricopa Citizen Leadership Academy.
Absolutely, absolutely. So Councilmember, any questions, comments? Or do I have a motion?
I'd like to make the motion.
Motion made by Councilmember Gettle and second by Councilmember Wade. Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Congratulations, Devin. All right, that'll take us to item 9.2, which we're going to see a presentation by Rick Williams on adopting a community outreach and communication plan for the 2026 Maricopa General Plan Update.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, wonderful evening tonight. Congratulations to you all, and it's a privilege to be a part of it. As you know, we've kicked off the 2026 General Plan Update, which is an 18-month to two-year process of updating, a comprehensive look at this update moving along. It's very intricate. Back in September, we had the immersion summit where we engaged not only members of the community, I'm sorry, staff here with the city of Maricopa, but also council members as well. So as we move forward going through that, the critical aspect of this is the public engagement and how we address it and how we get into that. So we're here tonight to talk with you and discuss the public participation plan. In collaboration with our consultant, we've put that together for you this evening, and we bring it before you. And I would like to introduce Matthew from the Michael Baker International Group, and he's going to actually take you through the presentation this evening. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Rick, for that intro. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Great to be before you to talk about this public participation plan. And is there a clicker? Is this it?
Push the green button.
Okay. There you go. Thank you, sorry. So as far as this public participation plan, Rick gave a great intro about the general plan itself. And public participation is a key component of that, but one of the first things that we need to address per state statute is to adopt a plan that outlines that component of this process. So one of the things that is important about this public participation, of course, this is a general plan that guides decision-making for the city of Maricopa. But this plan ultimately, this graphic on the screen, apologize for some of the font changes there, but this graphic identifies the process that we go through in updating this plan. There's three primary phases, the recognize phase, enrich, and achieve. But what you see intertwined in all three of those phases is public engagement. And it's because at the end of this process, and what is unique about Arizona is that the plan is brought to the public for voter ratification. So naturally, it's obviously important that we hear from the public, but at the end, we get a grade from the public in terms of ratifying this plan. So what we wanted to walk you through, and you can see under that recognize phase, one of the first steps after that kickoff summit is this public participation plan. And so I was just going to walk you through some of the highlights tonight, just to give everyone an understanding of that. But really, this plan is just as described. It sets a foundation. It is not a exact game plan. It gives us flexibility to be able to respond to public feedback as we go through this process, but it at least sets the foundation of who we're going to engage with and how. And so when we talk about that plan, there's really three things we kept in mind, right? We know that statute emphasizes that we must adopt this public participation effort. We want to make sure that we facilitate this through the entire outreach process. And then the other key component, especially since the pandemic, is now balancing our outreach with both in-person and virtual outreach. And we really like to emphasize that go-to-them approach, right? Is not ask the public to come to a meeting, but where does the public visit? Where do they attend? And go to them and figure out ways to engage with them in that way. So one of the first things I wanted to emphasize before we even get into maybe what most might think about, well, tell us about the plan. Well, the first thing is, let's talk about the public. And who is the public? When we say a public participation plan, and so in this slide, we wanted to touch on, when we talk about the public, it's not just residents, it's not just decision-makers, but we're looking at both community members and stakeholders. So you can see this list here touches on some of the key participants that we'll be engaging with throughout this process. But really, the key takeaway here is to recognize when we use a just general term, public, that there's many more participants beyond that than just residents. And it was wonderful to hear some of the agencies that are so active in the community, and we look forward to working with those agencies. And so many of them are up on the screen, and we're looking forward to hearing the ideas and the feedback that they provide to inform this process. So the other aspect that I would emphasize as part of this plan is, at different phases of this process, we're going to have different goals relative to outreach. At some phases, we're going to be focusing on informing residents, making sure they have the information to make their own decisions or to form decisions that can be shared with others within the community. So some of our outreach is just going to be focused on sharing information. Some of our outreach is going to be focused on consulting. And when we say consult, that means that we get in front of the right people to get the right information. So that's either consulting with council, consulting with our planning commission, our advisory groups, or some of those other agencies that were on the prior slide. But it's that consulting side is to make sure that we're getting in front of the individuals that might have the best information for the topic that's being addressed. Involve, right? We say public participation, but the key aspect is the participation. We don't want to spend the whole time talking. We need to be listening as well. And so that's where that involve comes into play, is that it's not only going out to the public and telling them about the general plan, but getting information from them. Collaborate. You know, we can sit down with residents, and often we hear diverging opinions. And so one of the best ways to get to a common foundation is collaboration. And so that's the aspect of this outreach effort, is that we're going to hear at times maybe competing thoughts. And it's collaboration that we're going to hopefully utilize to help understand what are the best aspects of those thoughts to arrive at goals and policies that will help move the city forward. And then last, of course, is empower. And the best thing about this public participation plan is it ends with voter ratification. So the residents are going to be empowered by giving the final decision on this general plan. So those are some of the goals to keep in mind, that at different phases, we might be focusing on two of those, all four or five of those. And so different outreach efforts require different goals. And so the other aspect that I would want to just emphasize, and then I can open it up to any questions or clarifications, is the public participation plan and the tools themselves. And so this slide just quickly gives a snapshot. The plan goes into much more detail about what goes into these tools. But you can see, of course, we'll have awareness campaigns, and that is focused on creating a brand, visual identification for this project. So when the public sees it in brochures or fact sheets or other things, that they recognize, oh, that is associated with the general plan. Okay, I'm interested in that. Let's learn more. So we'll have key branding that will make sure the project is consistent and recognizable. We'll have a robust standalone website, so that will allow us to have that interface and to allow residents to participate through that website. And then, of course, the print and social media aspects, right? So we're going to be coordinating with those associations or agencies around town and also utilize them to share information. So whether that's print or through the city or stakeholder social media accounts to get the word out about any events we have going on or drafts of material that they can review. And so this go-to-them approach, though, the meat and potatoes of this plan is on this screen, and one of the key aspects is development of the General Plan Advisory Committee. We're going to be going out to the public multiple times to get their input, but there's a lot of other interests in the community. So we can't go to the public too frequently, or else they start to, you know, get fatigue in terms of talking about the general plan. So the General Plan Advisory Committee is just going to be a group that can be a sounding board, that we can engage at a little more frequent clip, and bounce ideas and thoughts, share feedback with them, so that when we do go to the public, hopefully it's as efficient and as beneficial because we've had the preliminary conversations with like-minded residents and stakeholders. As I mentioned, to complement that General Plan Advisory Committee, we have these community workshops, and they'll both be conducted in-person as well as virtual. So if you can't make an in-person meeting, you can participate virtually and give the exact same feedback through the exact same exercises. So the great thing that really has come out of the pandemic is some of the fantastic online tools that we can utilize now that actually, in some ways, even makes engagement more interactive than what you might have in person. And so I think those two aspects will be great to complement each other, and you can see how we're breaking them out in three kind of key components. It's the kickoff and validation aspect, so kind of obviously sharing what the process is and what goes into it, but then also reminding residents about what your current general plan says, and what do you like about what the current plan says, and what maybe needs to be revisited. So it's not about just throwing away what we have, but recognizing a lot of that works, and there's no reason to deviate from it, and then surgically go in and find those parts that need to be revisited and revised. The other aspect of those community workshops that are maybe more structured in format are those mobile studios and target workshops. So we hear about these great community events that the city has, and they're attended by so many residents. So it's absolutely important that we piggyback those events. And again, go to where residents are participating as opposed to asking them to come to, you know, a meeting and have to listen to me talk. So we can utilize those target workshops to capitalize on all of those great activities that either the city or other agencies are putting on. The youth council is going to be another aspect that we key into. It's not just about the adults and residents of the community, but also our youth. What we want to hear and recognize is, as our youth may go off to school, we want them to come back to the city. We want them to want to open businesses in the city. And so it's important to hear from the youth about what city do you want to be a part of? And you'll be surprised, or maybe not surprised, when we do these in other communities, the thoughts and ideas that come from the youth will, you know, blow your mind in terms of the creativity and give you pause to think, yeah, why can't it be that way? And so I love how they challenge us in that aspect. And then, of course, digital engagement. As I mentioned, as far as the virtual outreach workshops, the digital engagement and some of the tools that we'll be able to utilize will help people engage on their phones and in a more casual way, so that when we capture their attention, that we can allow them to participate and let them go on to their daily lives. And then, in the end, our hope is that we have a plan that the community is proud of and will support. And so with that, I'll just turn it over to you, Mayor and Council, if there's any points of clarification. But otherwise, we're just seeking council's approval of this plan, which will then help us to initiate that public-facing aspect of this general plan update effort.
Thank you, Michael. Councilmembers, any comments, questions? Concerns?
Yeah, if I may.
Councilmember Gettle, yes, please.
Yeah, no questions or concerns, just thank you for trying to really capture a vast swath of our population here in Maricopa, you know, reaching out to the youth and making sure that they have a voice and a stake in what we put together is really important to me. So I'm grateful to see that here. I'm excited to see as this process rolls forward to some of the ideas that are generated from this outreach.
Thank you. Councilmember Wade?
Yes, Councilmember Marsh had been passing out the documents, talking about the general plan. And one of the things that was coming back to us and to him was the format of the form itself, whether or not it could be a fillable form attached into your digital workshop or network, so that people will be able to do it online as opposed to having to complete it, scan it, or send it somewhere else.
That, you know, I appreciate that council member of reminding me, I get hyper-focused on that virtual aspect, but there is still an aspect of the community that is more comfortable in sharing their feedback through more traditional measures. And so you're spot-on that as we go through this, all of the opportunities for participation will be complemented by either hard copy versions that you can print at home, or we'll have copies available here at City Hall where residents could pick up and be fillable as well. So if, hopefully if that addresses your comment, that's a great point of clarification, that I wouldn't want anyone to think that if you're not comfortable in the internet, that there's not an opportunity for you to still share your input.
Councilmember Marsh?
I want to thank you for including seniors in your list of targeted groups of people. We have an estimated 14,000 seniors in Maricopa, and they came from all over the country, all over the world, in fact. And they bring with them decades, many decades of experience in other cities, and they have memories of what worked there and what didn't work. They can add greatly to this. They've gotten past the get-off-my-lawn stage, and now they want to see Maricopa grow in right directions. It's a good group. You'll enjoy them.
Well said. The intellectual capital there is critical, and you're spot-on that that demographic provides us the opportunity to have a wider viewpoint on all of the aspects that go into a plan that touches so many components of the community. So we look forward to collaborating with them as well.
Also, I want to bring back a memory of 10 years ago when we did the current general plan update from scratch. It wasn't like high school where you get graded on your own work. You collaborate, not just in the city, but with other cities. You read other cities' general plans, and now other cities are using our current general plan as their model. I'm very proud of that. We worked hard on that prior general plan. So we should investigate what cities are rapidly growing like we are and find out what their general plans are.
And a great comment, and you can definitely be comforted by one of the initial aspects when we get into our existing conditions assessment, is working with staff about what benchmark communities do we want to look at, not only across their general plans, but some of the other metrics that you might look at to make sure that how we're, the communities that we're looking at have similar aspects of whether it's where we are or where we want to be. So yes, a great observation in terms of learning from others. And in Arizona, I think we have some great examples of that that we'll be bringing forward to residents to educate them on as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. I appreciate the presentation. I will just add to that, that since we first started talking about the general plan update, we, I personally have received quite a few people interested in serving and commenting, and I actually send Rick an email, I don't know how you're going to pick, from the plethora of people. And I don't know if that's normal, but that is normal for the city of Maricopa. And I don't know if that's normal, but that is normal for the city of Maricopa, for the residents to be so engaged, that I don't think you should have a problem at all. All right, given that, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
So moved by Councilmember Marsh. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Nor. Any additional conversation? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much. So at this time, that'll take us to item 9.3, and I'll invite up our intergov, Katie Proctor, for adoption of the 2025 legislative platform.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm excited to be here to talk to you about our 2025 legislative platform. Let's see. Yes. You know me in technology. All right. So it's hard to believe it's already been almost a month since our election. We do have some changes, both at the state and federal level, so I just want to go over a few of those things first, before we talk about the platform. On the state side, both the House and Senate saw an increase in Republican majority, and we do have some new folks joining in both chambers for leadership. Here in Maricopa, we do have a new member of the State House, that's Representative-Elect Chris Lopez. He will be joined by incumbents Representative Teresa Martinez and Senator T.J. Shope. Senator Shope will continue as the President Pro Tem in the Senate. He will also be chairing the Natural Resources Committee this year. Representative Martinez will be Vice Chair of Transportation in addition to other assignments. And Representative-Elect Lopez will be Vice Chair of the Natural Resources and Water Committee in addition to other assignments. As far as what to expect this year at the state legislature, there's already bills in the hopper, if you can believe that. We are already off and running. Opening day will be on January 13th, and we expect the governor to do our annual State of the State address, which you can watch livestreamed on the legislature's website. Our fresh deadlines of the session will fall at the end of the month, and we have bill introduction deadlines, followed by our first committee cutoff date of February 21st. Key issues this year: housing will be a key issue, and we've discussed that in the past. We do expect some of the legislation that we were concerned with last year to come back again. The other big issue will be budget. You've probably heard, our budget numbers are trending in a positive way right now. And there was a lot of excitement at the beginning of the fiscal year, there were some numbers thrown around, you know, $400 million, et cetera. What we know now is that we are probably running about $160 million ahead at this point in time, but we have ongoing expenses that are one-time designated, that really are part of our baseline generally. And those are things like state employee health insurance, and building renewal or building improvements for our K-12 system. Those run about $320 million a year. So even though we're ahead of the game, we're not quite ahead enough to make up that deficit yet. But we are trending in a very positive direction, so that's very good, and we're just going to keep hoping for that as we go into the session at this point. On the federal side, you're probably going to look at those numbers and say, "Katie, that does not add up to 435." And you would be correct. When I submitted this last week, we were still waiting for a few races in the Federal House to be called, and as of tonight, we're still actually waiting on one out of California. It does look like we're going to end up at about 215 to 220. So that would be 220 Republicans, 215 Democrats. Keep in mind, we have some folks that will not be sworn in. So our effective majority when we begin will probably be closer to 217 to 215, until those are filled. In the US Senate, 53 to 47. All of our incumbents in Arizona were re-elected, including our Congressman, Representative Eli Crane, and we now have Senators Kelly and Senator Gallego. On the federal side, we're still waiting for our current fiscal year budget, and we now expect that our continuing resolution, which we thought originally might take us into January, will probably actually take us into early spring. That'll give the new administration a chance to kind of get up and running before they start tackling the budget. We do expect committee assignments to come out in the next week or so, along with a schedule, which will give us an idea of what that pace will look like on the federal level. Now that we've discussed that, let's talk about the platform. The platform is your direction to staff on how to proceed in the legislative arenas over the next upcoming year, and includes direction to myself and also to our contract lobbyists. Those are our folks with PDG and Nexus, who I might add, we're very fortunate to have the assistance of. Just a reminder that if anything comes up during the sessions and we have any need for further direction, we will come back to you and ask. And if there are issues that you have concerns with, feel free to raise it with us, and we can always revisit those issues. This is an ongoing process, as you can imagine. You'll notice that on the state legislative platform, many of these items are similar to previous sessions. I would draw your attention to the second bullet under Revenue and Finance, where we're asking the state to maintain its transportation network to minimize the cost to our city and other local governments. And then, of course, under Governance, this is where we are going to be talking about respecting local decision-making, especially in relation to zoning. Under this one, you're going to see most of the same things as you've seen in the past. However, with infrastructure, we have two new concepts here. The first is anything that would redirect funds away from projects that benefit the city. And then, the third bullet point under Infrastructure is seeking restoration of funds that were delayed for 347 rigs TI last fiscal year. We will try to move those up this year at the legislature, if possible. The least, we do not want to see those pushed out any further. On the federal platform, much of this is similar to prior years as well. I would draw your attention to the second bullet point, where we're advocating that agencies enhance our ability to receive our appropriate share of federal aid programs. In the next couple of years, we will go into the reauthorization process for the surface transportation legislation, and this is an opportunity to really talk with our federal partners about what that looks like for our state in particular. As you can imagine, we do not look like all other states across the country, so we want to make sure that those policies and the reauthorization bills reflect our priorities. And then the last bullet point is something that we are investigating this year, and really what this one comes down to is the concept of self-administration for federal projects. We have been extremely fortunate over the last four years to receive an influx of federal funding, both through IIJA and through the Congressional Directed Spending Program, which is what we now call earmarks from the past. However, as that money has come in, it's gone to our state agency partners to administer hyper-local projects. And that's not always the most effective or efficient way to deliver those projects. So we are investigating opportunities right now with our federal partners to see if some of those funds for those hyper-local projects could come directly to cities instead. As we head into the session, I just want to take an opportunity to thank the staff here at the city, who are going to spend a lot of time analyzing bills and providing subject matter experience over the next few months. And I'd like to thank our contract folks, both at Policy Development Group and Nexus, who are a wealth of knowledge and experience. And I want to thank you for staying engaged in these processes to the benefit of our community. It's really important, and we're very fortunate to have your assistance. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Katie. I would like to add to your thank yous. I want to thank, for the session that just passed and finished, the number of residents that I was able to get to help communicate with our legislators on various bills. And please know, I'll be asking, I hope other councilmembers will be asking you to engage again. Some of these bills can be devastating to our city, and we don't want them to move forward. Others can be very beneficial, and we definitely want the push to make those happen. So, please look for encouraging words from me in regards to what to get involved in, because it's very important. Council, any comments, questions?
It's a great job.
Seeing none, yes, great job. I heard down here, Katie, thank you very much. Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I'd like to move that we accept.
Move to accept by Councilmember Gettle. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Marsh. Another opportunity for comments, questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much, Katie. That takes us to our last item of the evening, 9.4. This is going to be a decision on vice mayor for the next coming year. And I would like to start off first by thanking Vice Mayor Laraman. I have to be careful not to get too emotional, because she has been awesome, very awesome. As you know, or may not know, when the mayor can't attend two meetings at the same time at the different locations, then I call on the vice mayor. And Vice Mayor Laraman has been outstanding. Anytime I called on her, she was willing to attend, and she was willing to speak, she was willing to handle issues if I needed her to do them because I was working on other issues. Phenomenal. And that's what it takes to be a great vice mayor. And so that's what I look for in terms of the availability, the willingness, the boldness to go forward sometimes, because it's not always easy, is it? Yeah. So, I want to really thank you, and I want you to know I appreciate your efforts as vice mayor. And so I'd like to give you the opportunity to say a few words.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I would like to thank you and the council for the opportunity to serve as vice mayor this past year. It has been an honor to represent Maricopa locally and regionally in this way. Thank you for the opportunity this position offers to build regional relationships and the learning that comes from additional experience serving as vice mayor. So thank you very, very much. At this time, I would like to make a motion and nominate someone, if that's okay?
Sure.
I would like to nominate Councilmember Wade for the vice mayor. Councilmember Wade has been a leader in our community for many years. He cares very much for our community members and is a servant at heart. He has a passion to build a sense of community, and he makes himself available, and he serves selflessly. So at this time, I'd like to nominate Councilmember Wade for vice mayor for the next year.
Thank you very much. Do I have any other nominations?
I'd like to second the nomination if we can.
Second the nomination, very good. I have a nomination from Vice Mayor Laraman, and a second from Councilmember Manfredi. Any additional nominations? Okay, very good. Councilmembers, any comments, questions? Very good. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Congratulations, Vice Mayor. That brings us to the end of our meeting this evening. We thank you all for being here. Have a good night.
Good.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. 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 Thank you.